We're going to open the Tuesday, May 2, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting at about 6:30 on the dark. Will you please stand and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to nominate Mike Wood for chairman.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oh, we have to switch seats?
Yeah.
Just sit there, I'll just stand that's.
No, no, we're going to be sitting together.
We're going to do Vice Chairman.
Right with you, but yeah.
Yep.
I'm going to take all my candies.
And I just want to, I really wasn't ready for that, so can I just double check on the vote for that? I just wasn't sure who voted on that.
Uh, I did.
There were three yeses.
Uh, no.
No.
Thank you.
Four yeses and one no.
Okay, thank you.
So now we need to make nominations for Vice Chairman. I'd like to nominate Bill O'Neil for Vice Chairman. Can I get a second? No? Okay. Someone else want to make a nomination?
I'll nominate Bill Dunn.
I really do would, do not want to do it. I've had enough. I need to step aside. I think it's time. The, um, the people of Groveland have spoken in the election. I think they're looking for professionalism of the board. They're looking for respect from the board, and they're looking for better leadership. At this point in time, I think it's time to turn the tables and let someone else, uh, take over.
Okay. Any other nomination?
Uh, I'll nominate Lisa Coppin.
I'll second that.
There's a second. You have a vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Any opposed?
Did you vote?
Put that deal in.
Okay.
Okay, do you, uh, you can sit next to me if you want to. Um, okay, so we don't have any residents comments submitted, so normally I do the, the warrants. I guess Bill or Bill. Anyone want to read the warrant?
I'll do it.
Do you want to do the warrant? Okay, great.
Uh, motion approved.
Payroll.
Payroll warrants seventeen dash four three in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain because I should have prepared more and come earlier to review those, so I, I don't want to vote on something that I didn't look at. Thanks.
You can ask her what it's about.
Well, that's payroll, so the payroll one is fairly standard with, um, our bi-weekly payroll. Once a month, we pay the fire department, but it's normally a fairly standard amount from payroll to payroll. Deduction.
Uh, motion to approve deduction warrant seventeen dash four one A in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
And Lisa, just for your knowledge on that, that is our taxes, so federal and state taxes is the deduction warrant.
Motion approved bill warrant seventeen dash four one C in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I believe that's the fire truck.
Yes, it is.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That's the, the fire department ladder truck?
Yes, it is.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Motion approved bill warrant seventeen dash four three in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-three cents.
Get a second?
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All right.
Any discussion?
Um, seven hundred and fifty thousand of that roughly is for Penticott, a hundred and fifty thousand of that is the light department bills, and roughly ninety-seven thousand is town and water department regular payroll, uh, payables.
Thank you. Just, uh, repeat again, the, uh, light department, what?
A hundred and fifty thousand of that is the light department bills.
Light department?
Yeah, we pay the light department. Seven hundred and fifty thousand is Penticott's assessment.
Oh, okay.
The rest is the regular town.
Okay, thank you.
And water.
Any other discussion?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Um, let's see, we have appointments. We have an appointment of Dan Stone, fourteen Cannon Hill Ave, Groveland, to the zoning board of appeals through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Dan is here. Uh, yeah. Dan was nice enough to bring a resume, which is always nice. Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
Good morning or afternoon.
Evening now, yes.
It's been a long day for me. I went to work at five AM this morning. Um, my name's Daniel Stone. I'm very familiar with Groveland. I've been here just under two years. Uh, I live on Cannon Hill Avenue. Um, it's a little single-family home. It's relatively new as well. It was built in twenty-eleven. I looked in very recently, um, looked into being more a part of the community, and I, I started doing a little research, and I found that your boards are volunteer here. And so, you know, I've been to the, I've been to some, uh, the town meeting and things, and I made sure I've spoken to officials in, in the, uh, within the town departments, and I, I really, I feel like this is, it's a good place for me to be. I, I'm, I have ten years or more experience in carpentry. I'm a licensed plumber in the state of Colorado. I plumbed in Vermont. I went to college and got a biochem degree. Um, I'm currently an application scientist. Uh, I do that all day, every day. Formulations, team, team effort things. I supervise. I feel like I want to be a part of my community at home and not just work all the time. So, I, I thought that that, that would be a good place to start where I, I mean, I have a lot of applicable experience
Mm-hmm.
in, in understanding, uh, rules and regs. I've read the zoning laws in, that are current, the ones that just, uh, passed. I feel like there's a lot of work that could be done there and a lot that, you know, it, it's, I feel like it needs, uh, people with experience and, and are willing to get in there and, and kind of do some of those things for the community. So I wanted to step up and see if I could help. Really, that's why I'm here today, to offer that.
Great. Yeah, we just had, uh, the vote, um, last week or so on the new zoning bylaws and the matrix and, you know, the, the forward kind of process. We're going to have to go through each, either annual meeting or bi-annual meeting, um, to, to reinvent those, those zoning bylaws, so they're up to standards to the, today's zoning laws. Uh, and then also, um, you know, make it easy for people to understand what's going on with the zoning laws, because right now it's, it's kind of a mess. Uh, so it's a tough, tough task, uh, ahead of you.
Awesome.
I thank you for stepping up to, to wanting to be, to be part of that, fixing that process. That, there's a lot of good people on that board, so they're, they're pretty good to work with. Anybody else have questions for?
Um, no, the, to what Mike just said, it, there is a lot of new faces on that board. Um, you got to be open-minded. Find common ground. Don't get bullheaded. The board has, you know, over the years has gotten some locked, locked positions on that, and people in their positions got locked, and it cost the town a lot of money. So, going forward, if you can be open-minded and try to find common ground, I think you'll do fine over there. And as far as the new, the new, um, planning board and zoning board bylaw changes, we really need to go through it. We need to get the committee together, keep the committee going forward, the, the subcommittee with the building inspector and what have you. I, I think it's going to be a good thing for the town, and it's well over, you know, well, many years overneeded to be done. So if you can work with them on that, that would be great, too.
I'm excited, look forward to, to be helpful in that manner. It seems like something that could use just energy.
Yes.
Perfect.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, question. Not, not directed at you. Not directed at you, Dan, but, uh, I was looking at this appointment. It, it's through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And then the next one that's coming up is through June thirty, two thousand and seventeen. Why, why isn't this one, uh, seventeen also?
Because the planning board is not annual appointments. They're three-year appointments, and he's filling a vacancy. The next one is registrars, and they are annual appointments.
Okay.
So they'll have to be appointed again?
July one.
July one, okay. Um, I don't have any further questions. If nobody else has any further questions, we can take a vote. All those in favor? No? Motion? Sorry, I got to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve Mr. Stone to become a member of the zoning board of appeals.
Seconded. Seconded. Any discussion? Already had that. All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for stepping up.
Hopefully the ride's not too rough.
And Daniel, get a formal appointment letter. It's here, DeJitz.
All right, next up, we have appointment of Susan D'Angelo, three sixty-four Main Street, Groveland, to the board of registrars through June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. He is not here. Can I get a motion to appoint Susan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Susan D'Angelo to the, uh, board of registrars through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous? Uh, next we have recognition, uh, the March two thousand and seventeen Volunteer of the Month, Robert Guptill, for his outstanding dedication and volunteerism to the town of Groveland. And there he is.
How are you doing?
How are you doing? We have a certificate for you from March. It's a little late.
Well, we've had some issues.
We've had some issues, but, uh, do we usually take pictures with this?
You should read it. Someone should read it.
I'll read it.
Tracy's not here with his camera. Where is he?
Yeah, he's supposed to take some pictures. Uh, Volunteer of the Month, March two thousand and seventeen, presented to Robert Guptill. For your countless hours volunteering for many committees and jobs in Groveland, you have been a longtime member of the Open Space and Trails Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee, Historical Commission, and now in addition, serve as Cemetery Commissioner and as member of the Community Preservation Committee. You provide motivation and wisdom to so many, and your knowledge in Groveland history is outstanding. Volunteers do not necessarily have the time, they have the heart. Thank you, Bob, for all you do and make the town of Groveland a better place. On behalf of the town and the residents, we give you the community's heartfelt thanks. Board of Selectmen, William Dunn, Edward Watson, William O'Neill, Michael Wood, and Lisa Dubay Carpenter should be on here, but it's from March. And Dan McDonald's on here.
That might be a keepsake.
Yeah.
Could be. I like this item.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you holding my place.
Well, have you, uh, I think you time Mike for being on the different committees.
Uh, yeah, as you know, since I'm moving, there'll be five vacancies. You are going to have to fill.
If we can find one person to, to take them all.
Well, yeah.
All right. Yeah, you're going to be, definitely be a loss, uh, to the town when you, uh, when, when you leave. I know you've stepped, stepped up anytime anybody's asked you to, and, uh, how, how much longer before you, uh, you head off?
Probably till August.
My question is, you going to volunteer where you're going?
Yes.
Good for you.
I'm already lined up.
Good for you.
Excellent. All right, so next up, we have, uh, discussion, possible vote. Evaluation of three proposals submitted for the purchase of town land on Salem and Uptack streets. So, uh, Lisa, did you get a chance to read those?
I did look at them.
Um, does anybody want to start a discussion or make a motion on these? We have, uh...
Did any of these people file, uh, anything what they intended to do with the property when they, uh?
Yes.
They, they did. I didn't see anything.
Yeah, there was a storage one. There was, um, what was the other one?
Uh, I think there was a bu, a bus, business, um, park.
There was, yeah, there was an industrial-type park. There was a storage facility, and then there was another one that was, um...
Yeah, business office space. Storage facility and, like this one said, developing a portion of land with business condos.
So it's all business related?
I would like to, um, I would like to make a motion to accept the proposal from Stephen DeHulu to, uh, purchase the land, um, on the Uptack Salem Street property for a hundred and seventy thousand. I think Stephen has shown in the town of Groveland that he, uh, does a quality job at what he does, building homes and what have you. I think he'd be the right guy and the right fit for that piece of land, and I think the land will now get back onto our tax roll. And I also think that the, uh, gentleman will do a good job and bring tax revenue back into the town, whatever he does with it as far as putting a business park in there or whatever he plans on doing. So I would hope you would support that.
Can I get a second?
He's a high bidder, so can, um, it looks like he has everything, you know, in place.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Discussion?
No, I just think you should make mention of all three bids, so that it is, they are public bids, so you should at least acknowledge the three, uh, or the other two that made a bid as well.
So the other bids were from James Ogden of Georgetown, Mass, and his proposal was for a purchase price of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then the other bid was from Stephen Daniels from Daniels Electric, and his bid was fifty-five thousand, three hundred.
Mr. DeHulu's bid was one seventy, correct?
One seventy.
Yes.
Hundred seventy thousand.
Yeah, Daniel's electric was fifty-five, three, it looks like.
Yep.
And a little more discussion. Denise, that money could go into our reserves, am I correct?
Yes, so it would just go into general fund?
Right.
And it would fall to free cash, correct?
Right. But again, free cash, we could use it for a purchase of a fire truck, ladder truck, anything, big purchases.
Capital items.
Capital items, that's what I'm trying to say, yep. Okay.
Yeah, that'd help.
Uh, just refresh my memory on what, um, what we're getting on taxes on that property right now?
It's tax exempt because we own it.
We own it, right.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah.
So nothing.
So anything's going to be better than what we have.
What's the value of that?
Um, it's value, because it's six different parcels. Let me see, the total value on that is...
So just a quick question?
Sure.
Those are all adjoining, so it's, it, there are multiple parcels, but it's one property?
Correct. Well, it's, there are six contiguous parcels, all in the same area. The total value of all six combined is a hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred.
And the, and the reason why you can't sell it as individual parcels is because the way in, there's only a right-of-way in there, so there's not enough, um, frontage to get, make it into separate parcels.
Okay.
So that's why we're selling it as one parcel.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous?
So I will reach out to DeHulu, um, and begin the process with them.
Okay. Uh, next, votes of the board. We have the minute from April third, twenty seventeen. Got a good chance?
I read those over. They looked to be in order. I'll make a motion for passage.
Second?
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Minute from April fourth, twenty seventeen.
Uh, those, I read those over. They looked to be in order. I'll make a motion for passage.
Second?
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Lisa abstains. Acceptance of revised complete streets policy.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion? Denise, I did read through that. Can you clarify what that actually is? I mean, it was a lot of, you know, if this, then that.
So, yeah, so last year, just about a year ago, we put in this complete streets policy. Um, we submitted it to the state. Um, as you can see, it talks more about right-of-ways and master plans and sidewalks and things like that. Uh, we did submit it to the state. We were three points under being approved for that policy. Over the last year, it's been determined that the community trail project can rely on funds from the complete streets project. Um, so with the help of Mike in the back of the room, who helped us revise this to tailor it to what the state requires, uh, we are present, uh, presenting you with a revised policy. So really, it talks about, um, the town's commitment to, um, building complete streets. So when we do roadwork, we're talking sidewalks, right-of-ways, pedestrian access, things like that.
I do remember that presentation, though. You're right. Okay.
And that's in every roadway?
When they're being worked on. So not every roadway, but as we're doing work, we try and make a commitment to update those things. And then there's, um, state money available for projects under the complete streets.
But isn't it, it's almost like a, um, new state law. You have to make a handicap accessible.
Correct.
Wheelchair ramps.
Correct. So this is just formalized.
ADA approved situations.
Yep.
Would Governor's Road fall under this?
I don't know, given the timeline, that Governor's Road started, so I'm not sure.
That's been going on for decades, right?
Yeah, so I'm not entirely...
Is it coming when it started or when we finish?
I'm not entirely sure on that one.
I don't think anybody can remember when that started.
Moses.
Hmm. Might be the old one. Um, okay, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And if you wouldn't mind signing the last page of that.
Uh, next we have the, accept the resignation of Tokola Close, Facilities Coordinator, effective May eleventh, twenty seventeen.
Um, yeah, I would like to just have some discussion, number one.
We got to make a motion.
Look, go ahead. I'll make a motion. All right. Make a motion. I made a motion to accept his resignation, Tokola Close, Faculty Coordinator.
Get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, discussion?
Okay, so number one, I would like to say that, you know, Tokola did an unbelievable job in this town. He's going to be solely missed. You know, you come in, it would smell clean, and everything was shining, and he's going to be, like I say, I can't emphasize, I told him when I heard, I was totally bummed about it. Um, and I had said to him, I wish he can hang on a little bit, um, and, you know, e- even nights and weekends till we find someone. So that being said, I don't know, you know, if, if he can work nights or whatever, do we find someone to fill in, or are we good?
I think he said that he would be...
Yes.
He would, one, take on until the eleventh, and then, two, he would help out as much as possible.
Okay.
Um, until he, until we found someone to replace him.
Yes. He, um, you know, he got an opportunity that will provide, um, growth and a future with, um, additional opportunities, full-time benefits, things like that, that we just didn't have the capacity to offer at this time. So he will, um, he said, whatever we need to do, if he needs to train somebody, come back. He will do his best to fill in, um, a couple days a week or the weekend until we have somebody in place. Um, I did post that job right away. It was in the Eagle Tribune last Saturday and Sunday. Um, I've gotten a handful of resumes. Apparently Monster picked it up, so I'm getting all these resumes through Monster. But hopefully we'll have someone in place, you know, in the near future.
Do you think it will be a problem down the road from the, you know, I bet you haven't gone through them all, but
Thank you.
getting someone twenty hours again that wants to really work forty hours, and you'll have to...
Yeah, well, I mean, the pro-
Unless we get a retiree or something like that.
Right, I mean, the problem really is, I think, we're to the point now that it is a full-time, there is full-time work here.
Right, right.
Um, you know, it's five buildings. It's every day.
Yep.
Um, so I think, you know, we do need to look at that, because we just, we have the volume of, you know, we have older buildings. We have facility needs in addition to cleaning, so, um, I think we'll get someone to start. It is non-benefit eligible, so it's not even twenty hours. It's about, um, eighteen and a half hours a week. So hopefully, we'll either get someone that's retired or someone that's, you know, look, has a part-time job elsewhere. I, I don't know. We'll see what happens when we start.
It's been, it's been up posted for a few days. Any, any interest yet?
Yeah, I've gotten a handful of resumes.
Any that are?
But as I said, most of them, actually, all of the ones I've received so far are through monster.com, not through, so they're not local to this area.
Do you use Indeed, Denise?
I'm sorry?
Do you use indeed.com?
No, I, I actually just posted it in the paper. Um, for this type of position, I figured more local, uh, but it was picked up on Monster. I didn't do that. So I can certainly look at that.
I think it's, it, it will do it by geographic location as well.
Indeed?
Indeed. I-N-D-E-D. D-E-E-D.
Yeah, I will look at that. So, um, I don't know how many of the resumes we got currently are viable, given, you know, someone was from Lexington. I don't think they're going to drive here for eighteen hours at eighteen dollars an hour. Um, but we'll see. We'll see when it does play out. I did get one that looked promising. Um, currently works for Aramac and oversees thirty custodians in the Chelmsford School Department. So I don't know if maybe that's a retirement situation.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have to wait and see what happens.
Another source you might want to use is the, um, Mass Division of Unemployment. It's usually free. And they'll have the office in Lawrence, so it'll be local, regional to us.
Okay.
I know they used to have one in April, but they've since relocated. That might be another option, another resource.
I will look at that. Yeah, it's not like, um, the town accountant position that's posted, we post on the Mass Municipal website. Uh, but, you know, these type of positions, labors, we don't usually post at that caliber, so I will look at those options, see what we get.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Do we have to be in favor?
No, you can say no.
I hate voting for somebody that's going to resign or, you know, quit volunteering. I feel bad.
Right. Well, unfortunately, you can't make them stay, so... Um, all right, next up, we have Old Business. Anybody have anything for Old Business?
Well, I do. Um, the Bagnall School project was seated the other day. Um, that's been completed. Ed Watson, Selectman Ed Watson handled getting the picnic tables down. They were delivered, um, the other day, and he made sure they were put there. Uh, the project, we have one step left to go, is just clean up the ball fields, which it's been too rainy, and I believe they're coming out next week.
Oh, they raked them last week, I'm sure.
The ball fields?
The ball fields. They raked them.
Oh, they got raked? Oh, okay, so it's all done. It's completed. Okay, so everything's completed. So I'll make sure the sprinklers get turned on as soon as the sun comes out, and I'll keep an eye on it, and then we'll have to get someone to fertilize once the grass starts coming in. So that project's completed, and we do have money left over, I do believe.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to look into picket fence, when the metal fence comes down, and any extra money, we're going to use for huttop on the side of the building where they weren't able to during the, the school construction, so...
Yes.
Yeah, I want to thank you for, um, for donating and volunteering your time to do that. That was very helpful back then.
You know, it's a thing that we, it was one of the things I ran for selectmen. It's one thing I wanted to see get done, because it was there for a long time. It was a dust bowl and...
I went to Bagnall with a dust bowl.
Right, so...
Thirty-five years ago.
Hopefully it, hopefully it turns out well, and the kids get to use it, you know?
Any, so you think, uh, by June, that'll be usable?
I would say the middle of June.
Yeah, so the last couple weeks of school, they'll be able to do it.
Right, right. The longer they stay off of it, the better they're going to be.
Summer camp will be able to use it?
At what time they start?
So they start the first week in July, I think.
First, the second week in July.
Yeah, so, I don't know. They said by, by the beginning of June, we should have, um, grass that will need to be cut, so it should come in fairly quickly.
And it takes three mowings after that before you can really go on it.
Yes.
So I'm thinking middle, middle of July, probably.
Yeah, so I would say probably not the school year. I think
Right.
the school year would not be able to use it, and then either into the summer program, they may have access to it.
Yeah, I'll have to go down there before the school, because I want to see what it looks like, because like I said, I, I went there thirty-five years ago, and it was a terrible land.
And did they, did they fix the fences today, do you know, or?
I don't know, actually. I haven't followed them.
Couple fences fell down. We got a problem back up, but that's...
I haven't heard from them.
Good, good. That's good that that's, that's done. Anything else, Bill?
That's it, um, right now for that.
All right. Anybody else have anything for Old Business?
Can I respond to an Old Business item?
Yes.
Um, Phil O'Neill, you asked me about the stop sign at Gardner Street and Main Street. Um, so that cannot be changed because of the manual, oh, the Uniform Traffic Control, section two B dot zero four. The roadway carrying the lowest volume shall be controlled. Um, Bob also checked with Merrimack Valley Planning and confirmed that, um, Main Street westbound, they did a traffic count not that long ago, and that had two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight vehicles, I guess, to Gardner Street, six hundred and ninety-seven.
How many going the wrong way?
Um, so that is clearly the, Gardner's clearly the roadway carrying the lowest volume, and therefore they cannot change that stop sign, so...
So I just have to drive up and down Gardner more often?
Right, when they're, when they're...
When you see the count, yes.
When they're counting, yes. Get your friends to do circles around there. Eddie, you have something?
Uh, no.
All right, I have one more thing.
Yeah?
So I met with, um, as I, you guys knew, I met with Mike Houghton on the Pines Project. We had a meeting on the twenty-seventh. Mike alluded to me that they still want to be involved in it. Um, he was, at the time, was saying that he was kind of going back, maybe looking at the well, you know, sucking the water out of the river. At that point in time, I told Mike I wasn't sure if we had signed contract, but I was ninety-nine percent sure we had signed contract for the well company, which we do, so we're going to press forward with the well. Denise has been working with the electric light to get supplies delivered for the, um, the transformer and what have you. Um, I know the highway was down there, moving the containers and moving some stuff around. The dog park gate and roadway, I was talking to Bobby the other day. He was moving that to get the dog park away from the boat ramp. So we're going to keep moving on that. Mike had some legwork he needed to do. I have some legwork I'm going to do, but we're going to press forward and try to bring that project to completion as well now the Bagnalls done, so...
Could I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Uh, was the river as a source of water supply explored for that property?
Yes, it was.
And what was the barrier to using that as the resource?
So when the Recreation Committee looked into it, um, they contacted the same company that put the pump in the, in Penntucket using the river. And the price that was quoted here was almost double what it was quoted for Penntucket. So at the time, we sort of decided, well, let's, you know, reevaluate, and then the, um, the Recreation Committee sort of, I don't wanna say disappear, but they sort of backed out a little bit. Some of their members didn't really wanna participate, that's when this board took it back over, and we decided to move forward with the well instead of the river.
And the, and the cost analysis between the, the river and the well, what was the, even, what was the difference in price, approximately?
Um, significant.
Yeah, it was, it was quite a lot.
Okay.
'Cause I asked the same question, and it ended up being 50% more or something.
Yeah, it's significant. So just to drill the well itself, it's only about, um, between 10 and 11,000.
Okay.
And the, the big cost is the pump, so once we drill a well, we have to get, we have to figure out how much water is being produced and the flow, and then we can get a pump, go up to bid for a pump on that. The pump at Bagnell was about 26,000. So, all said and done, even if you say 50,000 for this well, it was well over 100 for the river option.
And the, and the other thing with the river option is, at the high school, the river has a, an area at the high school, it's kind of mellow, it's, the, the current isn't high there. So where they're able to take it out of the river, at the high school, it's slow, it's kind of pondy-ish. Up here, where we are, the river and the current is constantly flowing at a high rate of pace, and they also felt like the material, the suction hoses would be ripped out. Right, so, it wasn't really the right setup here, but, um, but me, me, that being said, we still already have a signed contract with the well company, so I, you know, I think we're locked into now going with them and not going backwards.
Thank you.
Phil, while you're on the Pines, um, the bathrooms?
Bathrooms, I talked to the road commissioner, um, the last rainy day, not today, but a few days ago, they were in there scraping up the floors. He said they've been working on it rainy days and slow days, and they're gonna press forward with it, and I was kind of on the assumption that it's more of a budget issue, where they're gonna, you're gonna see more in the next month take place because of the new fiscal year. But they are pressing forward, and he is working on it. And he didn't give me a timeline of when he thought it would be done, but he said, um, they needed to get some plumbing fixtures and stuff like that taken care of as well.
So, there's no estimation whether it would be usable this?
Didn't have that conversation, no.
Seasoned or not?
No. I don't know if you have anyone on that, Denise?
I, I don't, I don't know a timeline. Um, we had gone out to bid, um, to have the work done, and it was quite expensive, so we did sort of what we did at the Pines, we reeval, I'm sorry, at the Bagnell. We reevaluated and thought that if we buy the parts directly, we have a, a product list, we can buy them through a distributor, and then hire someone to install it and save some money. So that's the route we're taking. They have the list of the equipment that we need, they wanted to get the, um, buildings themselves squared away with the floors and things like that, so. Once they get that squared away, then we can order the parts and move forward. So I don't think, I don't think it'll take long once they get going, but, um, you know, as Bill said, they're working on it on rainy days and slow days, 'cause now they have other projects in town, and line painting and roadwork and things like that, so.
And where were things left with the dog park?
So the dog park, they are moving the gate, so, right now, some of the issue is the parking for the dog park is impeding the boat ramp a little bit. So they're just moving the interior gate away from that, and they're building a little parking area dedicated just for the dog park. So just kinda move the traffic a little.
And then, one of the issues that was raised at a previous Selectments meeting was the, the upkeep of the dog park, and is that something that still needs to be addressed?
Yes. And I do, I did hear from, actually, two more people complaining about, um, well, I heard from people complaining about the dogs, and then I heard the people that are complaining, because the police are stopping them, because their dogs are running around down there. So I do think we need to increase signage, and I think it would be up to this board to decide if you want to, you know, if that area specifically, do you wanna limit dogs only to the dog park? People feel if they're walking, you know, on the paved road, it should be fine to walk their dogs. Last Friday, there were dogs running around, they were up here, they were down there, I actually called the police myself and said, can you just drive down there, there's just dogs running everywhere. So I don't know, I, I think we need to do something about signage and, and find a way.
Aren't there signs down there that say, no dogs on field? Or is that just the Shanahan?
No, I don't think that, they're, it might be there, but they're small. I think on the entrance to the, um, right when you come in where it says Pines, I think maybe something should be posted there. But I think we need to increase the signage down there, and I think we need to deal with the maintenance.
Maybe dogs unleashed, too.
Right.
I mean, we have the same signs at, at Washington Park, but unfortunately, dogs don't read.
Well, but that's the people who said that they feel they're being intimidated by the police, said, well, there's not enough signs, I didn't know I couldn't have my dog down there.
Don't worry.
The Pines. That's their answer. They didn't know they couldn't have it, they didn't see a sign that said that.
But there's a sign that says Dog Park, right?
I don't actually know if there's a Dog Park sign, is there?
Well, there, there isn't, no. Not until you get to that fence, then there's like a little sign about, it doesn't, it may say Dog Park, but it's more about the responsibility to pick up your waste and that type of thing.
I think the people that use the park, use the park when they put their dogs in it. I think it's the people that don't use the park that walk around and try to, that's the ones that are abusing it, so. So we keep the people separate from the ones that are taking care of it, using the dog park, and not blame them for the people in art.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I mean, they use the dog.
So the people in art, we need to do the signage to, to tell them.
Educate them.
Educate them, or whatever, you will be fined.
Right, and I agree, and as I said last meeting, I think it was, um, and a lot of people that use that dog park in that area are not even from town. So, I think, you know, if they don't live here, they don't see the meetings, they don't know some of the issues around that. So I think if we put some increased signage down there, maybe that'll help, um, or at least it'll say, you know, you may be fined, or something like that.
Um, the fines, do they go into the general fund?
Actually, the police don't issue fines, they really have just been sticking to warnings and speaking to people.
I think if the signage were clearly visible, I think it would be reasonable for them to issue citations, because I think that's the only way the behavior's going to be deterred.
I, I kinda like that, only because that, those funds would go to providing bags or service to them, and they clean that up, you know, 'cause we don't have anybody doing that.
Right, but to do something like that, you would really need to do a revolving account for the dog park or any revenue, so, you know, you can't dedicate it to that unless you do a revolving fund, so. But it's still, it could come into general fund, and you could create a line item budget for the dog park upkeep.
We should do something, 'cause, I mean, we don't even have bags down there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we don't.
And I think if we put bags into the park itself, people are gonna walk their dogs more in the park, and, so I think the bags should be at the dog park, period, um, in the signage.
Yeah, I mean, they're not, the bags aren't expensive, it's more about getting the people to use them.
Right.
Right, and who's gonna check on them and make sure they're there, and restock them and clean them, I mean, that's, the maintenance of it, all of it, sort of goes into that.
I think that there is a, uh, significant contingency of people that really value the dog park, and it might be, uh, a good idea to maybe put together a subcommittee to kind of address some of those issues, and have them put together a proposal for how they think it can best be managed. And that way, they have some input into that process, 'cause I know that the last time this was discussed, um, it's a pretty emotional issue for people who go there a lot, and let them be part of the solution. That's one of the things that I would propose.
Okay, so anybody else with Old Business?
Well, does anyone know of anyone that wants to participate from the dog park? I mean, maybe you could put out a request for volunteers, if there's somebody that would like to participate in that, or spearhead that as far as the dog park is concerned.
I don't know anybody.
No, I just mean the board in general, sort of put out a call for volunteers.
Who, uh, who cleans up the dog park now? Who cleans up the dog park?
The people that use it.
People that use it, the highway every now and then, when it gets to be an issue, but.
Right.
I think if you put something on the town page, there was certainly a large group of people that had input on Facebook, and they could organize that on their own. So something to the effect of, if you're interested in being part of a group that's going to explore options for upkeep and maintenance at the dog park, you know, please provide your name and contact information.
Sure, I can do that.
It's a good way to get a volunteer of the month, if you're gonna take on that. No offense.
Bob, you have free time now.
Yeah, you have plenty to work for a little while.
And then I would add to that, that if nobody comes forward, then you can't complain when the board makes decisions that you don't necessarily agree with or like.
Or you can just be responsible and pick up after your own dog. That would be the easiest thing to do.
They, they can't complain if they don't help? Wow.
You don't know the rules?
Huh?
You don't know the rules?
I know the rules, but, wow, that's a tough one.
You can't complain if you what?
You just said, if they don't get involved, they can't complain. I was like, wow, that's a tough one. I, listen, I know where you're coming from, but, just, I've never seen it.
Yeah, well, if you wanna complain a lot, and you don't wanna be part of the solution, I don't know what to say.
I agree, I, you know, I've never been to Fantasyland, but I've, I've seen the brochures, and it looks nice, but.
Anybody else for Old Business? No? Alright, next we have, uh, Correspondence, minutes from April 18th, 2017, and the minutes from April 24th, 2017, special meeting. Finance director's time. You have anything?
I don't think I have anything else for tonight.
No? Alright, Selectments time. Anybody have anything for Selectments time?
So I would like to add as an agenda item for the next meeting, um, whether it be executive session or, uh, open meeting, is the contingency plan or a plan with respect to the town clerk. If she's unable to perform her duties and involve her in that process of coming up with a strategy.
Yeah, does, does that have to be a, uh, executive session, or can we just put that in the agenda for next?
If it's just a contingency plan with her involvement, it would not be an executive session.
But it'd have to wait two weeks, the next meeting.
Unless you wanted a special meeting in the meantime, yes.
Well, it's kind of an important role in town, so.
Well, so, some, there were some changes today to the, um, previous assumption that, um, Ann would not be in the office. She had called me this afternoon and said that that is not the case, um, she was just not going to be here today, and she would be in, um, for a few hours tomorrow and a few hours on Thursday. So if people needed to be sworn in or have town clerk business, she would be available, she wasn't sure of the time she'd be in. She also said that starting this Friday, she will not be working Fridays, so that her schedule will be Monday to Thursday, um, and then she's hoping to get more regular schedule next week, when she knows her appointment. So, I don't think there's gonna be an issue, um, other than maybe this week with people needing to get sworn in, but she will be in the office.
But you're right, we should have some kind of contingency plan in place, in case, you know, something happens, when she goes on vacation, or, you know, anything, or anybody in the office goes on vacation.
I definitely think it's time where we need to get Ann involved with us, and we need to have a person, either an assistant, I don't know what you wanna call it, don't take me out of context, but. If, if Ann gets sick, town business has to still perform, and we need to be able to run that office. If it's someone in here that's gonna step in and fill the shoes while she's out, or whatever, I definitely think we need to move forward with it, and I, I think we, um, not, you know, Ann was sick, and I think Ann came in a lot when she was sick, and she shouldn't have been, but on the same token, we need to run the, the town, and we should involve her. So I agree, we should probably have that as an agenda item involving Ann as well.
Yeah, I will say that anybody who is volunteering in that office, or is, um, an assistant in that office, um, will need to be appointed by this board, uh, will need to be core checked, uh, and will need to be bonded.
So what's?
We had a policy like that, uh, that we had discussed, uh, months ago, that that was going to be the policy with that office, with the personal information that's in there, uh, the financials of the town that's in there. We need to make sure that the assistant or volunteer is properly vetted with a core check, is bonded, and is approved by this board. Sorry, go ahead.
But is that a, an across-the-board policy with, with respect to volunteers? I mean, for instance, people who volunteer at the police department, do they go through that process? I mean, I would say that, if that's the process.
I think they actually do, actually.
I, I actually don't know of any volunteers in the police department specifically.
They never have interns or anything?
Not that I know of.
I think they do.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I know that they have over there is, um, the kids doing community service.
And I'll go back to what Mike just said, um, I don't think it's a problem having a volunteer in that office, but when you, when you entail a volunteer that's gonna go into a computer, or gonna go into, um, town. Documents and records, maybe it's a whole different story. So a volunteer coming to volunteer at the police station, or volunteer to volunteer there, or anyplace else, yeah, but when they're gonna be handling and manhandling documents, I think it's a whole different story. Again, we can, we can, I think this conversation should be with Ann and us as well, like I said last meeting, and I think we should have, put on an agenda item and have her come in and have the adult conversation and see what we can come up with.
Let's do that, make that an agenda item.
Okay.
Question on that?
Yep.
Out of the town clerk's office, is the, uh, members of the board of registrars are bonded, uh, core checked, because they have access to that, uh, office also? And I, I don't see how you can.
They are approved, though.
What's that again?
They are approved.
Right, but I think there needs to be consistent policy with how you vet people, that you're allowed to be in those positions, so I would suggest that if that's.
Didn't we just, didn't we just appoint, um, someone to the board of registers today, tonight?
Yes, but this, this person wasn't, probably isn't bonded, probably isn't gonna get core checked, uh, unless, uh, they, they have to, I don't know how you could, uh, how, how you could say that, that, uh, volunteers have to be, but yet the board of registrars, who has access to probably more, uh, equipment in there, doesn't have to be core checked or bonded.
Well, this was a policy that this board instituted February? I think that we had a discussion about this.
Yeah, you've had a few discussions over the last few months, um.
The last discussion we had that I can remember was when we.
It was when Bill wasn't here, you were on vacation.
Oh, I'm sorry, when I was in the last conversation, that, um, they were going to go and, we asked Ann if she could turn around and get her people core checked to use that equipment, what have you, and that, and that was the last I heard about it. But I didn't hear anything back, no, but it was more of a voluntary thing, we asked her to do.
I just think whatever policy should just be something that's documented, so that there can't be any question about its application being consistent. And if the board took a vote on it, and that's documented, then to me, that would suffice, but did the board take a vote on that?
That's what I was gonna ask, I don't know if we discussed it, or?
No, I don't think we did, I think it was more of a voluntary.
I know, yeah, I don't think it was, I don't know if they actually voted on it. I know they discussed it and wanted to proceed in that direction, but I'd have to go back and see if it was actually.
So put that as an agenda item, too, that we'll discuss that policy.
Yeah, just one thing to note, though, so regarding the bonding, volunteers wouldn't be bonded, but, um, the town clerk is required by law, which means an assistant town, if, if you're designating someone as an assistant, they would be required to be bonded. Just, just like the assistant treasurer has to be bonded, if they, because they would assume the responsibility. So, I wouldn't think necessarily volunteers would need to be bonded, but again, if you're naming an assistant in any capacity, they would need, they would fall under that law, to be bonded.
Would the assistant have a payroll, or salary?
That would be up to this board, we don't have a budget for it, but that would be up to this board.
Well, I'm just trying to designate the, the difference between an assistant and a volunteer.
Well, see, so the assistant would assume all responsibility as the town clerk in the town clerk's absence, so that's why the bonding comes in, because they hold all the same powers.
And a volunteer would just work with the clerk in their capacity.
A volunteer would, right, exactly, volunteer on tasks, projects, things like that.
And we've had, you and I had the conversation recently, that not only is it that one office, there's other offices, we had, if someone's out sick or what have you, they need coverage, the other offices need coverage, it's not only that one office, so. Do we have to find, do we find someone in the building that can do coverage of all of them? I, and I don't know, that's maybe.
Right, well, I don't know if you remember, when we were hiring Cassandra, I requested that she be a floater, 'cause we need a floater in this building. The board didn't wanna proceed that way. But yes, when the Board of Health, when she's on vacation, that office is closed for a week.
Right, so that, I mean.
You know, it does become a hardship, but.
Problematic at times.
But, you know, there are, you know, if someone needs recycling stickers, we can go in and get them from that office. I mean, there are enough people that know.
Right.
Bits and pieces about the offices that we get these done, but.
So maybe that's the conversation we need to have, is when that person's out in that office, maybe they understand that we need to go in there and what have you.
Yeah.
So I think, again, we're premature talking about this without having.
And I really think we need to look at the senior work-off program, we have an accepted program through the Council on Aging, that people can apply, uh, be accepted, they go through the formal core check process, if they're accepted, they get a tax abatement for doing the work. It's so underutilized, our program. Um, in my former community, we relied on that to fill in for offices, we had a core group of people that were trained to answer the phones and have a checklist of, how do I find answers, and they could.
That's a good idea.
Fill in in offices. We just don't have the people here wanting to volunteer. I know the Council on Aging and the Assessors Office, they kind of jointly oversee that program.
Bob, you don't wanna volunteer for that?
They were looking.
You get one certificate, and then you can cut bait and go.
They are looking to tweak that program a little bit and make it more accessible to our residents. It did not make it on this town meeting, so hopefully in the future, but, you know, we would love to have people participate in that program, and again, they get a tax benefit, we get some free labor, really. And, and that is a good way to get some people that, um, wanna get out for a few days, for a few hours, if we have vacancies here, they could fill in and, and provide at least a body in and. And, and that is a good way to get some people that want to get out for a few days, for a few hours, if we have vacancies here, they could fill in and, and provide at least a body in an office to answer phones and answer basic questions.
The rudimentary services.
Exactly, just, and so there's not just a sign on the door, close for the week, you know, that kind of thing.
Some of the communities that I'm familiar with, that, there's a negative to that, because if you give the people the tax break, somebody's gotta pick it up. And it's, it's nice to give the, some of the seniors, the, or, or people that are short on money, a, a tax break, but there again, the rest of the residents in the town have to pick up for that.
Well, no, it comes out of the overlay, it's not, it's not on the tax, it doesn't affect the other taxpayers, so it's, it's set aside in the assessors overlay money that they set aside specifically for abatements and those purposes. So, it shouldn't affect other taxpayers, at least not that program.
So, I have one final question regarding the clerks, so, in the, because that's an elected position, wouldn't the board need to go through a process? And obviously, Ann would be part of this process too, but the board couldn't necessarily appoint an assistant clerk, because if it's an elected position, it would have to go through a certain process, correct?
No, so the board has the power to appoint an assistant, just because the one position is elected, they both don't have to be elected. So, you could appoint with the recommendation of the clerk, you could work in collaboration with the clerk, but it's this board that could make that appointment. And they could appoint a temporary or an interim in the event of a long-term absence.
Similar to what we did at our meeting with Cassandra.
Yes.
Anything else for selectman time?
I'm good.
Bill?
I'm good.
Bill?
At this moment.
Yeah, I just got one.
Go ahead.
At the, at the town election, the medical marijuana went down to defeat fifty-nine percent negative to forty percent positive. So, hopefully, that's, that's gonna end that the townspeople spoke, it's a mandate, the townspeople don't want it, hopefully, that ends, should end the discussion on a medical marijuana grow facility in the town.
Well, it was a non-binding question, so, not necessarily, it doesn't really say anything, it does say that the town voted it down for the people that did come out and vote. I just want to be clear that I, I wasn't in the pro marijuana, because I wanted to force it on the town, I wanted the town to be able to, to make their vote, which they did. And I respect that and, you know, we'll, we'll move on with it, but it's, it is a non-binding article, so, whether it won or it didn't win, really didn't matter, it was more the opinion that I respect for the town. Anything else?
The only thing I want to say is I'm really kind of disappointed by the turnout on Monday. It, it's, it's really kind of sad, ninety-five percent of the population in this entire world doesn't have the, the benefit of being able to choose their leaders and, and in this country where we have the, just the supreme right and, and privilege to choose and decide which direction our government will take. So few people choose to exercise that, that option and that's just truly sad and I'm, I'm just a bit disappointed, I, I wish more people would take. Take initiative in their own lives and, and step up to the table and, and have your voice be heard.
I think that was the lowest turnout too, wasn't it, the, do you remember what the total was, seven hundred?
No, it was eight hundred.
Eight hundred and something.
I thought it was like eight fifty-seven, eight twenty-seven.
And I'll be honest, so I was covering the tax office for most of the morning and people came in to pay their tax bills, because they would do, had no idea it was election day. The FedEx guy even came in and said, is there an election? I mean, it's just, it's unfortunate that people don't know when the town election is.
It's terribly unfortunate, I had four run.
What else can we do about that? I mean, I've, I've seen, you know, people talk about it, we talk about it on the board, we see that the sign out front has it, we have candidate's night.
Right, I mean, I don't think.
With signs.
I don't think we didn't do anything, I mean, you know, other towns use their community notification system, we could put out a phone call in the future and give people a heads up. I don't think we didn't publicize it enough, I think it's just people are busy and don't necessarily pay attention to town business, unfortunately.
Especially in a town this size, the number of turnout every vote counts. So, remember that for next year. So, is it?
Yes.
You said?
I did have something for selectman time. It was regarding a meeting that took place in this room on April nineteenth, that some people were invited to, some people were not. Ended up being a quorum, the community, community preservation committee. I did talk to, to Mike Dempsey about this, I was not satisfied with the response, so I would like to put that as an agenda item for the next meeting. Somebody have a comment on that?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Well.
Just interested in learning more about it, that's all.
We're gonna be done in two minutes if you want to come in here, we're wrapping it up.
Actually, no, we're just kidding.
No, no, we are, no, we are, we are.
Don't give the guy out.
I'm sorry, I'm new at this, so we get a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-six.
Seconding. Two minutes.
Seconding, all those in favor? And we're out.